I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I've just been texting. There's music going over your statement. So I'm gonna make sure that there's no music and then we'll let you restart.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
I want to make sure that our audience gets to hear you.
Hopefully, it's a good song, John.
It's gonna be good, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm told that it's good now, so you may start.
Okay, thank you. Greeting voters of Lowell. I want to first thank the sponsors of tonight's debate and LTC for airing. For the viewers at home for tuning in whenever it is that you'll be watching between now and Election Day. And to my fellow candidates for engaging in the process of running for local office. Both running and serving in elected office is an extensive process and a very important one. And over the past nearly two years, as I've had the opportunity to serve in my first term on the Lowell City Council, it's been humbling to learn all the issues that we're asked to deal with as city councilors. Everything from sidewalks to clean drinking water to family poverty and homelessness. All the issues that impact society are issues that land on our desks as city councilors, and we have to deal with them at a deep, granular level. And over the past two years of dealing with those issues and working on solutions, I feel that I've gained a lot of experience and can return as an even better counselor and advocate for the people of Lowell if given a second term on this council. I have no choice but to be committed and passionate about these issues as I'm raising a family here in the city of Lowell. I'm committed to making sure this is a great place to live and raise a family, whether you're a lifelong Lowellian looking to stay here, whether you're a new immigrant, or whether you're a refugee resettling here in Lowell. I want to make sure that this is a welcoming place and with a great quality of life and one that people want to come to raise their families. So, thank you very much again. Look forward to engaging in the process of this forum tonight, and I humbly ask for your vote on November 2nd.
Thank you, councillor. Next, we will be moving to councillor Rita Mercer. Your statement, thank you.
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank LTC and the hosts for making this event possible to allow us to be better and the public to be better informed and to get to know the candidates a lot better. That's very nice of you to do that. My name is Rita Mercer, and I am running as an at-large candidate throughout the whole city. I'm running to continue the good work that I started 26 years ago to make a difference in our city. I want to provide the best constituent service that you have every right to expect and deserve. I want to be your messenger. I want to bring your problems, your ideas, your concerns from your table to City Hall. Together, we can solve problems while making our city a better place to live. Don't let my longevity fool you. It's called experience, and I have plenty of it. I have some goals, and they are that to provide excellent public safety, as I'm sure we have, but we can always fill our quota and be a little bit more with more police, more firefighters. Public safety is very important. People won't feel safe being in our city or moving here if public service, public safety is not here. I want to have an environment that is friendly. I believe that one of our major problems is the homelessness that we see created through drug addiction, mental illness. Something has to be done about that. We can't just slide it under the carpet and forget about it and pretend that it doesn't exist. I want to start with that. On Tuesday, November 2nd, you have the power to reelect an experienced leader with a proven track record who will continue to work for every person in this entire city. I humbly ask for one of your three votes. Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to do this. I could go on and on, as you probably well know on a council meeting, but I'll stop right there and ask for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mercer. We will be moving on to councillor Vesna Noon. Your statement, please.
Thank you. Thanks to the sponsor for tonight's event. My name is Vesna Noon. I raise my families in the Highlands. I'm humbly honored to serve the city of Lowell for the last three terms, two have been consecutive. We have done a lot of work. There is still a lot to do, but to make our city the best that it can be, one that embraces diversity and creates opportunity for all. Lowell is rich with deep-rooted immigrant community, industrial historical background, really innovative small businesses, and broad-reaching nonprofit organizations, including the art community. We have an opportunity to be a model for the world if we are bold enough to reach for it. Pandemic has impacted every aspect of our life. It's also highlighted the inequity that exists in our city. As we move forward, we need to look to address those equity, equity in education, equities in housing, equities in employment, and healthcare. That's what we should do going forward. I believe my job on the council has been working together, bringing people to work together. We do have the opportunity with the new election system that call for teamwork, building a productive relationship between councillor and neighborhood. With your support, I pledge to do all that. I ask for one of your three votes come November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Noon. Next, and lastly, not last, Mr. Bobby Tubielli. Your opening statement, please.
Thank you. This is truly a humbling opportunity to be in the midst of candidates running for Lowell City Council as well as incumbents who have served whether one term, three terms, or anywhere from 10 to 13 terms. I think that this is an opportunity for the city to really think about where the city is going to be, not just today in 2021, but where it needs to go to 2031. And so, this year is going to be a year about representation. This is going to be a year about the health and wellness of our community, but it's also going to be a year about having the right city council team, the right council who's going to work together to really be proactive, not reactive. And so, my name is Bobby Tubielli. I am a first-generation American. My parents immigrated to America in the early '70s from Nigeria, and I've been in Lowell for half of my life. I turned 40 about a month ago, and it's interesting being in this position where I've turned 40, 20 years in Lowell, and I'm excited because I can take a lot of experience that I've built coming here as a student, graduating, renting throughout the city, marrying my girlfriend from college, been married for almost 12 years. We have two sons, eight and seven years of age. We are taxpayers, entrepreneurs, homeowners, investors in the city. We have served on boards. We are stewards of making sure that our community is doing better and advocates as well. And I think the city needs to ensure, as we say welcoming, we don't just talk about it, but we execute it, and we make sure that it lives in our policies as well. And so, professionally, I am a human resources professional and a recruiter, and as everyone here is talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion, it's important to understand that I am the only candidate sitting here who actually serves in that role in a professional capacity as well as in a business capacity as well. And so, I'm truly excited to bridge the city forward.
Thank you, Mr. Tubielli. So for the next phase of our debate, we have, I'm saying, we have curated questions from the general public as well as from the committee, and the committee consists of Lowell votes, the Lowell Sun, and LTC, and my post. With that said, I would like to start the questioning. This first question will go to Ms. Depp Ballinger from the panel, which is from the committee, and we will start. Chris, why don't you just start us off?
Sure thing. It's good to be here tonight. It's good to see all of you again in a somewhat normal setting. I wish we were a little bit closer, but the times dictate otherwise. Good to see you again, Depp. So the first question goes to you. Are you vaccinated?
Yes.
And how would you assess the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic?
I am vaccinated. Vaccination is really important to me. It's important to my family, my grandchildren, and my mom. I think the city took a little bit of time, but I really believe that they did their best working with Lowell General, Lowell Community Health Center to get us vaccinated in a pretty timely fashion once we opened Cross Rivers in Patacetville. Vaccines were plentiful at that time, and they were booked solid for a really long time. I was glad to see that they had a mobile vaccine because, as we know, there is disparities in some of our underserved parts of our community. I think education, there's some people out there that just don't believe in it for one way or another. My husband goes out every single day and manages a retail store, and he has 400 to 500 people coming in. This is in Lowell, and I get very nervous. I get really, really nervous. But we got to still educate the public and get them to be vaccinated.
Councillor Drinkwater?
Yes, I am vaccinated, and I will take this opportunity just to say to the public how important I feel that it is that we all get vaccinated. One big reason being is that we still have members of our population who are not yet eligible to get the vaccine, young children among them. I know I live in a household with three young children who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated, which is why my wife and I got vaccinated as soon as we possibly could. We have to look out not only for ourselves, but other people that we could potentially be spreading the virus to in our social interactions. So I think it's incredibly important for the public health and safety of the city that we all do our part. If you're eligible for the vaccine, please do get vaccinated. In terms of the city's response to the pandemic, one thing that really stood out to me were areas that the city of Lowell had to step up where the state and federal government early on in the pandemic was leaving gaps to be filled. I think of the winter of 2020 into 2021 when we were hearing from residents how difficult it was to go and get a COVID test, to do the right thing, to make sure that if they were symptomatic, that they went and did the safe thing and got a test. Many talked about going to a stop-the-spread site in Lawrence or in other places with long lines, and at that point, every level of government in the city of Lowell, from the council to the city administration to our state delegation, was imploring the governor's office to bring back a stop-the-spread site here in the city of Lowell, and for whatever reason, it wasn't happening. So towards the end of 2020, we used some of our CARES Act allocation and actually started a city-run COVID testing site, which was handling, you know, many, many people a day, and that made a real contribution to public health. The other way that we've stepped in is our local public health authorities and nonprofits really brought testing and vaccinations to the people.
Thank you, councillor Drinkwater. The next question, no, not next question.
Councillor Mercer?
Yes.
You're next.
Same question.
Same question.
Thank you for that question. It's not too difficult.
Just wait.
And it was a very easy choice for me to get the shot. I got my first shot in January, my second shot in February. I'm counting the months because I think if the booster shot is available, it's eight months after my second shot, and that would make it October. And God knows, I get the pneumonia shot, the shingle shot, the flu shot, you name the shot, and I get it. I need every precaution and every bit of help that I can get to stay alive, but it isn't a, it is a very serious subject. I just want to be a part of doing my civic duty by helping to make this city safe and the people that I come in contact with. As far as the city's effort, it was a very new experience and a very large charge for the people in the city, under the direction of Joanne Keegan, our acting health director. I think she did a tremendous job, and I have, if I could give her an award, I would because she heard from me so many times, could you get this person a shot? Can we get that one? Do we have a mobile unit? I mean, I felt like I was the biggest pest because I have a neighbor next door who's handicapped, and he relies on his special van that he has, and it wasn't working, so there was no way he could get out. So I had to call about that. And I did receive calls from people who were homebound and were looking for someone to come to give them a shot. So we have to think of everybody. Just because we can move around, there are people that can't. But I think all in all, I think the city did a very, very good job, and I thank all the sites that were available for the shots at the Cross River, Lowell General, did a tremendous job all over. So I'm very, and then there was certain other sites throughout the city that was very good. So I can't complain. They never experienced this before. They did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor Noon?
Thank you for the questions. Yes, I did. I did it not just for myself, my family, but for those that, with whom I come in contact with. As right now, opportunity to urge a resident, those who have not, have not have a shot yet, please, please do so for the people that you care about. As far as the city responds to the pandemic, I think the city administration, the council, the state representative have done a remarkable job with all the partners, Lowell General, Lowell Community Health, Trinity's, and so many others in terms of, you know, you deal with a multicultural community, so the language barrier there. And so, they've done everything they possibly can with translation, multi-language, reaching out to, you know, if the resident don't come to the area, they go there with mobile event and whatnot. And so, those are extremely well, they've done a remarkable job. And John's correct. At one point, when there was no, we don't have test site, so test site, the governors just put it in Lawrence, and our residents want to go to have tests. They couldn't, too far away, long line. So the city decided to reduce care money to do, to open up and partner with Trinity's and other test sites because we know it's important, it's important for residents. That's what we did. So the city did a remarkable job with all the councillor and the state representative. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor. And lastly, we'll go to Bobby Tubielli on that question.
Thank you. I am vaccinated, and so is my family. This conversation around public health is, fits 100% in terms of my priorities as a candidate. The health and wellness of this community is critically important. I do think, though, that we're focusing on one aspect of public health, and as someone who formerly was a recruiting manager at Lowell Community Health Center, I respect the public health mavens in that entire system, as well as Lowell General Hospital, as well as the Greater Lowell Health Alliance and other partners as well, who have, for months, probably upwards of a year, have met on a weekly basis to talk about strategies. And so, as councillor, I don't know everything, but I will definitely be a supporter and a partner with those mavens who know what's happening on the ground, and we have to lead by following people who know what's going on. I personally think that in addition to vaccines, we should be talking about nutrition, we should be talking about mental health. We have food insecurity issues, and all of this impacts the health and wellness of individuals as well as communities. We have social determinants of health that we have to talk about as well, and housing and education that affect public health outcomes. So vaccines are not the only solution. We have to do more, and I will be forththinking as a councillor to ensure that we're looking at this holistically. Thank you.
So our next question will go to councillor Drinkwater, and this question is actually from the public. And Ms. Pina, would you please ask your question?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome, and thank you so much for having me here again for the second time. So the question is, do you believe racism is a public health crisis?
Yes, I, when the city council debated a declaration to declare racism a public health crisis last year, I voted yes on that, and I still, to this day, believe that racism does constitute a public health crisis. To me, as I kind of sat with that phrase and considered it, the one thing that really stuck out to me was that if you look around the city of Lowell, depending on what neighborhood you're in or sometimes what particular block you're on, the health outcomes, and particularly life expectancy, are impacted by that. And until we can fix that type of inequity where you can't predict someone's life expectancy or their health by where it is that they live, then we have work to do, and therefore systemic racism does constitute a public health crisis. Because as you go neighborhood to neighborhood, you realize that while we're a diverse city, we have areas of our city that are diverse and not diverse. We have areas that are not diverse because they're predominantly white. We have areas that are not diverse because they are predominantly non-white, and those are the areas of the city where you see these disproportionate health outcomes and lower life expectancies among the residents of those neighborhoods. We have other neighborhoods that are actually diverse because you have a mix of white and non-white. So, you know, we have to address why it is in our city that there still are pockets of segregation to this day that exist, and why within those pockets, we're seeing different health outcomes among people. And that is why I did feel strongly in making that declaration that racism is a public health crisis because it's letting the public know that we have work to do. We have work to do on health inequities for our residents of Lowell, and I felt it was important to make that declaration.
Thank you, councillor.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. Yes, for Rita Mercer, please, thank you.
Thank you. Do I feel that racism is a public health crisis in the city of Lowell? I, on the council, was one of six city councilors that did not support it, and I'm not going to sit here and say, gee, I changed my mind, and I'd be the first to admit if I made a mistake or not, but I, but I feel the same way. If that word crisis wasn't in there, that would be one thing, but to say and label our city as a city that is a crisis because of racism when we have 69 different nationalities at Lowell High School, we have many diverse people. Afghanistan residents are coming from their country into ours. So if this is such a bad city with numerous amounts of racism, why is everybody coming here? I don't understand that for one minute. Maybe I'm misinterpreting it. If, if for one reason they said drug addiction is a public health crisis, I would be the first to say absolutely. And if I'm insulting anybody, I'm sorry that you feel that way, but drug addiction is a public health crisis. Homelessness is a public health crisis. Maybe because I don't take part in any racism that I don't feel it if it's around me. Does some of it exist in the city? I'm not going to deny that to some degree, there might be something, but I certainly don't take part in discriminating. I lived in the Lower Highlands of the city, bringing up my family at my table, where every nationality, every ethnic group, every gender. My daughter's girlfriend was, she, you know, she liked women. Hey, I didn't say to my kids, don't hang with her. So I never felt it. I never seen it. Does it exist? Probably. I've been discriminated against, but it isn't the form of a crisis. So if I insult people, I'm sorry, I just don't see it, and I'm not going to label my kids.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Vesna Noon, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Yes, I strongly feel that racism is a public health crisis. I vote along with my other colleague, yes, on that. I think the work to dismantle systematic racism is difficult. It's uncomfortable. Take a lot of sustained commitment and resource, but that's what makes us stronger and healthier as a city. We're talking about inequity, inequity in education. You see that during the COVID. Kids do remote learning. Some of the kids don't have tablet, don't have iPhone, Wi-Fi. So those are some of the things, it's minor thing, but big thing that impact our community. Yes, healthcare, yes, housing, all those inequity we need to address as a city. So moving forward, we need to look to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next, Bobby Tubielli, please.
Yes, it is, and it's not because of what I feel. This is about what's fact. And so, I am not going to spend the next two minutes to relitigate facts. I want to talk about where we go forward in terms of action around racism, where we go around action around systemic inequities. And in terms of action, I think that question really should be posed to existing council that had an opportunity to declare it but did not, and had a counter resolution, and in that counter resolution, they highlighted a number of different areas that they were going to work on racism, from healthcare to education to, to healthcare, education to, and a number of different areas, excuse me. I think there were about four or five different pillars in the resolution to, to work on racism. And it's been a year since that resolution, and personally speaking, I have not seen any work being done. And so, we can talk about racism being a public health crisis, but I think we also need to talk about the work that needs to be done that has not been done. We can talk about human resources audits, we can talk about roadmaps, but at the end of the day, we need to talk about the work that needs to be done, and this council, in my opinion, has failed in that work. And if that's disrespectful to anyone, I apologize.
Thank you, Bob. And the last, but not least, Depp Ballinger, please.
Thank you.
I too feel that racism is a public health crisis in the city. I've lived here all my life. I lived in the Lower Highlands. I moved over to Patacetville. I'm really pleased to say, in Patacetville, in my neighborhood, for example, a lot of the older French generation, like my in-laws, fortunately, they're still with us, but a lot of the older people in our neighborhood have moved, have passed on in life. So a lot of the people that have bought the houses, my neighbors, are people of color and are people of different nationalities, and it's really nice to see that happening. But the reason why I say racism is a public health crisis is there's so many inequities when it comes to our school systems, our school buildings, Vesna said, you know, the laptops, the Wi-Fi, all of that, and most importantly, Mr. Drinkwater said it, was the life expectancy. If you look at the statistics, they're there. When you read the HR audit, the city has a lot of work to do, and I agree. I'm a person of action. I have spent 40 years of my career getting things done, and I won't sit on the council and just sit idly by. I'm going to, I'm going to share my truth, and I'm going to make the best decisions to move forward, and we have to resolve some of these inequities in the city of Lowell, without a doubt.
Thank you.
Did I have an opportunity to just make a, just, can I say one more thing, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much.
And we will allow for everybody else as well.
Thank you so much. I need to speak to the voters about this particular subject, and to the voters who think that by saying racism is a public health crisis, is Bobby Tubielli saying that white people are racist? That is not what I'm saying. If people are saying or thinking that Bobby Tubielli is going to be a city councillor that goes on council floor and calls white people racist, that is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is that work needs to be done, and when there's opportunities to do the work, this council has failed. And so, we can talk about the issue, and we could talk about the work. Talking about racism is something that is a lifelong journey, and when that opportunity came last year to have that conversation, city council could have went one way, not just in declaring it, but how they approached the subject matter. They took it personally. It was not about your life. It was about the lives of those being affected for centuries, and those things are still playing out in ways that we see it and in ways that we do not see it. And so, we don't have to know everything. We don't have to be the most educated in this subject matter, but we do have to We don't have to be the most educated in this subject matter, but we do have to care enough and be a public servant and stand in the shoes of those that it does impact. And so it is disrespectful. And I think, as a city councillor, going forward, I will be someone that if the issues don't pertain to me, that's not my lived experience, I will be empathetic, I will understand, I will sit down with you, and I will work hard to stand with you, whether it's individuals who look like me or individuals who do not look like me, because that's what's going to be best for Lowell. And that's how we bridge Lowell forward. Thank you.
I would also like to give two minutes to Counselor Mercer.
Thank you very much. To make a statement that this council did nothing is completely wrong. If you don't believe me, tune in tomorrow at the city council meeting when we have a public hearing for a DEI officer. This is a person of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So to say that we did nothing, that is completely wrong.
I didn't say you did nothing. I said you failed.
And second, I didn't interrupt you, Mr. Toobioli, Bobby. I didn't interrupt you. But I just want to say that, yes, I admit that people did not have laptops, but they certainly did get them. I didn't think everybody in the city would have it. I don't think maybe in years ago, my kids would have had them either. But we did know that people didn't have them, and the schools supplied them. So to say that, oh, because that must have been a public health crisis. It probably was a crisis, but it wasn't a public health crisis due to racism. So to say this, there were not only to declare that a public health crisis, there were some stipulations that accompanied that. And one was to try to fund the DEI on our budget. We have many organizations in the city, and to fund one entity would not be fair to the other good organizations. Where will we get net funding to defund the police? I don't think so, not on my dime.
Would any other candidates would like to also respond to that question? Counselor Drinkwater, you have the same time.
Thank you. I would just like to make this distinction very clear. Lowell is not a racist city. There was never any implication in the debate about declaring racism a public health crisis that Lowell was a racist city. I certainly wouldn't live here if I felt that it was, and I love this city. In fact, I'm inspired every day by the opportunity that's created for all the residents here. And it's why I choose to live here, it's why I choose to work and make the city better. So I just want to make that important distinction, that this debate was about acknowledging the different public health outcomes that exist in our city, and that can be traced back to race and racist policies of the past that existed throughout this country, policies that related to housing and to healthcare, and that continue to persist today. So I think this was a nuanced debate where, unfortunately, I think some of the nuance may have been lost. But I think it was important to many of the advocates out there to get us, as a council, to really look at this issue and realize that there are different public health outcomes that until we address them, the work is not done.
Thank you, Counselor Drinkwater.
Thank you. Counselor Noonan?
Yep, thank you. Just want to add a little bit. Before the DEI came into its birth, that was years ago, one year ago, my first term in the council has been doing just that. Diversity on board and commission, even the board and commissioners for. I said, look, why don't we have an alternate board member, and or associate board members, so that we bring in people from diverse community, women, Asian, Hispanic, and so on, to those board. Also, we look at hiring, having practice in the police department or fire department, urging them to do a workshop, helping people understand how to become police officers, firefighters, the police department doing it. Of course, you can't get from A to Z in one night, one month. It's a lifetime, just like you said, Bobby. It's a lifetime of work. And the council had been doing that, especially the HR audit. The HR audit is the roadmap as to how we need to look at our hiring practice, our retention. Some of those, some of the work that we were doing as a city council, and we'll continue to do that. So to say that, you know, the council had not done those work, it's not completely true.
And I appreciate you saying that, Counselor Noonan. I will say that as a human
Now, listen, who shows this? This isn't right.
As a human resources professional, I will say
Bobby, I'm sorry, I have to cut you off.
No, this is not fair.
Thank you.
Counselor Noonan has 30 seconds to finish.
Well, thank you. I mean, again, you know, like John, you know, I love Lowell. I'm not saying that Lowell is racist. There's no one say Lowell is racist. Those who support or not support the racism public health crisis, particularly those of us here, John Ite and others, and Bobby's and Deb, and to some extent, Rita herself as well. She's done a lot of work. And when time come, we'll pull it together, just put our different side
Thank you, Counselor Noonan. We will move to Ms. Bellinger. Your response, please.
I agree with John Drinkwater. To clarify, racism is a public health crisis when it comes to healthcare outputs. It's very documented. When you have somebody like Susan Levine, who has done yeoman's work over at the Lowell Community Health Center, saying racism is a public health crisis, you listen to the experts. You really listen to the experts. She serves so many of our underserved community. But this city is not racist. I don't have any racist neighbors. Are there inequities? Without a doubt, there are inequities in a lot of different areas in our society, whether it's inequities in, you know, food. I mean, I sit on the board of the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. We give out 80,000 pounds of food in a month. That's incredible. But yes, we're not a racist city at all. I think the definition, as it relates to public health, it's the right decision, it's the right thing to say.
Thank you. We will move on. We have other questions as well. The next question will be to Counselor Mercer, and it's from Chris.
Madam Moderator, if I could, I'd like to point out that the question should be going to Bob Hoey, but he's a no-show tonight. He apparently had another engagement. So that's why we're going to Counselor Mercer on this question. Counselor Mercer, what changes, if any, would you make to the Lowell Police Department and how the Lowell Police Department functions? And you can address hiring, you can address crime fighting, you can address crime prevention, anything at all?
Well, I wish I was last on this question, but that's okay.
You can thank Bob for that.
Yes. So there's always room for improvement. And to say that I wouldn't really, I'd leave it the way that it is, I wouldn't just leave it the way that it is. There's always room for improvement. I would see what the problems were. I don't know what they are firsthand. I'm not a police officer, but I know that they take their life in their hands, and as society gets older, we have more crime, we have more problems that we never experienced before. We have Solomon Mental Health that closed years ago. We get mental illness, people on the streets dealing with all type of people that we never had to deal with before, homelessness, people are on drugs. It's a different atmosphere altogether in the city. I think the problem is, I feel bad for them. They have their hands full, I see every day. If you had a police scanner and you heard everything that's going on, you'd say, oh my God, I didn't realize they worked so hard, or I didn't know that this existed and all this. They have to be psychiatrists, they have to talk people off of bridges from committing suicide. There's so many different things that you don't think of. You think maybe they just sit in a cruiser and they write a ticket. There's a lot more than just writing a ticket. What would I do? I'd interview them and see what we could do to make this better for them, and what are your problems? I think communication is very, very important between the chief and the public and the police. It would be nice if they had their show and told us about their problems, so we could understand it a little bit better. I really admire the police. I don't want to have to, when you go out at night, and I'm not one to go out late at night, it's a different atmosphere altogether. Believe me when I tell you, people are inebriated, people are on drugs, you don't know what you're dealing with, and you don't know that if you're coming back home. You just don't know when you watch the news and see this place was shot up. I really admire them. I would give them all the help that I could. The only thing that I would say is, I would like that quota to be up there for police officers. I want that many regiment for the police.
Same question, Counselor Noonan.
Thank you for the question. There's a couple of work need to be done. We, the police department, have done a good job. There's still more work to do in terms of recruiting minority in the force, because the work, the population or the staffing of the force, it does not reflect at all the community that they serve. I would also advocate, you know, that they, you know, take on a pilot project, a pilot body camera. Harem Moses incident would have validated the police if we have the body cameras. We rely on the building next door. It's not not clear. It's not not clear. But when you have police officers having a body camera, it's not only instill trust in the community, but also validating the allegations that, you know, people will say to them that they're not doing their job, or they chase Harem Moses to his death and all that. You see, those are, I think we need to start doing that, because if you don't do it, the public is going to do it anyway, right? Everyone have iPhone, right? So, you know, I would advocating to do a pilot project and body cameras for police, so that do two things. Build trust with the community that we serve, but also validating, you know, whatever people say about the way they respond to crime or to that particular incident. Thank you.
Bobby, you have next, yes.
Thank you. I think that when we talk about policing, we need to take a step back and realize that police officers are people too. When they take off that uniform, when they take off that badge, they can look like any one of us going to Market Basket, any one of us going to any kind of ball field, they're one of us. And so we have to start by making sure that our police officers feel seen, feel heard, work on morale. As a human resources professional, these are all things that I'm trained on, that I've worked on for almost 15 to 16 years around professional development, giving them the tools to be successful, whether they're walking the beat, or they're doing an investigation, et cetera, et cetera. And so how do we ensure that that workforce feels heard, feels supported, and are given the tools to be successful? Those will be things that I would absolutely be working on as, if I get the opportunity to be your next half archcounselor. I think that there are other things we can learn too from other communities that we don't have to recreate the wheel in Lowell. We can work smarter and not work harder. So I'll be looking at innovative ways to ensure that community policing goes from good to great in the city of Lowell. I have some really good relationships with beat cops who are walking in my neighborhood. They see me walking my sons every single day. My sons give them fist bumps, and sometimes the police officers give my sons a junior badge, a sticker. And that's how we build it. We start from the community, we start from the block. And as long as we start seeing one another and work together versus pointing fingers at one another, it's all about relationships. And I want to work on that. I want to work on trust in that relationship. I want to work on dialogue in that relationship, and I want to make sure that police officers feel valued as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, same question.
Me again. I'm fully, I believe in fully funding the police. I think we need to ensure that it's staffed properly. I also would continue with the community policing, but I would love to see some beat cops in the neighborhoods. I'd love to see a beat cop walking down the boulevard. We get a lot of cops that, you know, show up for various things, but I really believe that we should have some of these cops, especially depending upon the season, the summer season, where it's later, lighter outside, just to interact with the community. Because I think people, you know, whenever they see a police officer, especially behind them, right? I go, ooh, is he pulling me over for something? You know? So everybody sort of tenses up, and it really shouldn't be that way. The beat cop downtown, John Quigley, he is just absolutely amazing, and he talks to all of us. And I think it's nice that the businesses and the residents downtown know him. But I also, also love the fact that they continue to attend neighborhood meetings. I think that's really critical to the conversation. And as Counselor Mercer said, communications is important. I know our person that comes to Pawtucket, to the Wang School when we have our meetings, or he's on Zoom, I know how many break-ins are taking place. I know when people are doing more than, you know, breaking into cars and things like that. I love the fact that I get a notice every day at 9:00 that says, I get cars locked. And I make sure my car is locked. But the other thing
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Apologies to cut you off. Counselor Drinkwater, your question. I'll meet your answer, please.
Thank you. I agree with, I think all of that has been said on this point. I think if we have made any mistake when it comes to policing in the past decades, it's really asking police officers to do too much. We're asking them to be social workers, we're asking them to be drug and mental health counselors, and there is a lot of stress and trauma related to the job. And I think if anything, we've put too much responsibility and too much of a burden on police officers in the police department to respond to all of society's toughest problems. So to the extent that we can give more resources to the police department in the form of actual social workers and actual drug and mental health clinicians and counselors to go out there and respond to calls and situations with them, I think we'll be doing both our residents and our department and officers a real favor by doing that. I also agree with the idea of using body cameras. I know that is something that's been the subject of collective bargaining negotiations here in the city, and I certainly hope for a result that will result in a pilot program, 40 body cameras. And I think if you look at this and these things that we want to do to continuously improve what is a very good and very effective police department, these are things that will actually take additional investments and funding. So, you know, I think we want to make sure that we're looking to the outside to capture grants, which is happening, which has brought a couple of social workers into the department who can respond to calls, and also, you know, to appropriate more funding to the actual department line item. Because if we are going to continuously improve policing in the city of Lowell, it will take additional investments in the department. So I think the way that we can improve it is by continuing to refine the way we do things, adding civilian resources to the department, and continuing to invest.
Thank you. Yes, we can, you can respond, but could you please keep it very short?
Absolutely.
Under time constraint.
Two things, two things with respect to public safety. I think that, I actually would agree with Counselor Drinkwater in terms of the abundance of responsibilities that we put on policing. And I think that as we move to working on improved police relations, as we work on innovative police strategies, I think we also need to think about where the community can step up as well. I don't think the police should be there to solve every single problem. And so I think And so, I think a big opportunity, a huge opportunity, is the neighborhood groups. Those are the eyes and ears in the community, and I would actually, as city councilor, want to strengthen, as from a community engagement perspective, increase the recruitment of individuals attending those community group meetings, not just three or four people, but we need 30, 40 people actively engaged in those community meetings, because those are the boots on the ground, and they can help police do their jobs better. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to amend or change their response? We'll move on to the next question. And the next question is to Councilor Newen. This question is from the public.
Yes, thank you. So the question is, where do you stand on the ballot question allowing the public to vote for the mayor?
I would support it. I mean, if that's the wish of my fellow council, I would support it. I know that the next council will get to do that, have that discussion, whether or not, you know, the resident should be, the voter should be the one that select mayor. But I also want you to say this to you, that tonight, that is, should I get elected or reelected, that I want you to say, even the neighborhood councillor, there ought to be term, a staggering term, maybe five, four, five years, that discussion need to have, be had by the next council, because you don't want to have, you want to bring more boy, you want to bring more people to come in and want to serve the city, serve the district, serve the, you know, the community. So if they want to, you know, run, then there's a break, there has to be a break, one-term break, and then you can come back on, whether three years, four years, five years, the next council is going to have to discuss it. That would be the first motion that I file, because I strongly feel that we, you don't have, you don't want to have king and queen of the neighborhood. You don't, you don't. Because at the same time, you say, I want to bring more boy, bring more idea to the table, how we can serve our district, our city better, and when you, you know, just one person all the time, that's not right. That need to have, that discussion need to be had, the next council.
Thank you. So now, Bob, tell your...
Great question. Speaking honestly, at this juncture, at September 27th, I don't know. I don't know. This is speaking very honestly. Councilor Newen, as you were saying, we don't want a king or queen, or we don't want someone to be there forever, you know, we currently have that in our at-large role, where we have someone who's been there for 26 years. And so, I think about that, I wrestle with that. We have individuals who clearly care about this city, who've been here for a long time, but how do we create a system where other people get a shot too? Let's not forget that this districting system that we're moving towards was as a result of a lawsuit. The city did not do this on their own volition. This was through residents disrupting their lives to make this city more representative, not just by your skin tone or your culture, but by neighborhoods. And as I've door knocked in Centerville, in South Lowell, in the acre, residents who are much older than me, who've been in this city much longer than I've been, are looking to Belvedere, and they're telling me, and I'm sure that they've told some of you too, that they've controlled the power for too long. But here's the deal, I'm not going to be someone who's going to be pointing fingers. This is not a us versus Belvedere conversation. This is a, how do we have a council that has values and systems of community engagement and civic engagement? The last 10 years of council has seen a decrease in voter turnout. 10 years. We are now, I mean, we know the numbers, we know the numbers. And so, I, my commitment in 2023, if I am on council, is to have 25% voter turnout. That is my commitment, and because that's a value, it's good for local democracy, it's good for Lowell, and as an HR person, that's how you increase pipeline, by making sure you have the right people on the bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb, Valika, please.
So the question is not how long somebody stays on the city council, but is it is if we should put a question for the mayor on the ballot. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. No, I don't think we should have that on the ballot, my personal opinion. The mayor's position is strictly ceremonial, and they run the city council meeting. I don't think, I don't think that the public should have any input. They're electing, with this new system, they're electing district representation. So, they have, they can, all our voters, all our residents can call me and say, look, I hear this one's interested in the mayor, this one, this one, who are you leaning towards? I would be more than happy to share my information. But you know what? Let's do, we have a change this year, let's see how it all works out, and I will, my vote on the council floor would be a no.
Thank you. So now, John.
Thank you. I plan to vote yes on the ballot question that all residents will have on their ballots this November. We're a very unique system of government here in Lowell, the Plan E system of government, where unlike a city council president who presides over city council meetings, we have a mayor who is the ceremonial head of the city. And for that reason, I believe that residents really care who their mayor is, maybe more so than they would care who their city council president is. And I've certainly sensed that upon being elected to the council. I immediately started getting outreach, you know, from residents from all sides advocating for one candidate or another to become their mayor. So, I think in this unique system of government, where, you know, the mayor will represent the city in a number of ways for a two-year term, I think, you know, residents care about that for representational reasons, and deserve a say directly in who that mayor will be. So, I think this, it will be a good way for residents to get engaged in that process and plan to vote yes.
Thank you so much. And Rita Mercy, please.
Yes, thank you very much. This question is a very good question, and yes, I am a city councilor that put that motion forward to get it on the ballot so that the public could vote for it. This is not about nine people or 11 people, this is about the city. It's for the people, by the people, that's what democracy is all about. It isn't about, it's me that should decide. I've been there for 26 years, I'm done, proud of it. It's the public that put me here, not me. I go to the public and I ask, what are your concerns? And I bring it forward, just like this, going out to the public, who do you want? That's my opinion. So, I mean, I will never apologize for doing public service. If they don't want me, they have the term limits to let me go, and they haven't so far, and I hope they don't in the future. Thank you.
Bobby, did you want to?
To be extra clear, I think that we need to have the conversation around voter turnout, not solely based on electing a mayor. There's a lot more things that we as a council can do to impact voter turnout. We tend to focus on Z, and we're not focusing on everything else prior to. We can bring local government closer to the people. We can, there was a district candidate, I can't recall who mentioned it, talked about mobile government services in the neighborhood. We have police precincts in the neighborhoods. We can have local government in neighborhoods that will help individuals who may speak Spanish or Kamai or Portuguese. We can have multilingual city employees satellite in the neighborhoods. We can bring local government closer, make it more accessible, make it more inclusive. And I think that if we work harder on those things, and we're passionate about it, and we put resources to it, we don't just have to talk about a mayor, we don't just have to talk about titles, we can talk about community engagement. And as your next city councilor, if I get the opportunity to do so, that will be my priority. I will be working with the people and making sure that the people are put first.
Thank you for that. Does anybody else want to add on to your original response? We'll move on to the next question, and this question is actually from Mr. Chubialy, I'm saying your name correctly this time.
I think so.
And it's a question from the public. Well, I challenge you to say my last name, but that's okay.
So, as a longtime employee of The Sun, who has interviewed homeless people standing at the Lord Overpass, who has visited homeless camps along the railroad tracks in South Lowell and along the Murray Mac River, what would you do as a city councilor, all of you will, if you're reelected, to address what appears to be a worsening problem of homelessness in the city?
I'm going to preface this and say that this is a conversation that can take weeks, but in the two minutes...
We are two minutes, so...
Yeah, in the two minutes that I have. Homeless, those who are facing housing insecurity, and that's a wide spectrum, from people who are living on the street to individuals who are couch surfing, they need homes. Homeless people need homes, they need places to actually go to. And we, they also need programs to go to, to ensure that they have purpose in their life. I'd like to highlight a lot of programs that are out there, from Life Connections to organizations like Community Teamwork, they're doing that hard work. And there are many others that I'm not naming at this point in time because it doesn't come in the forefront, but there's a lot of folks doing that work right now. And so, homeless folks need homes. Homeless folks need support across the spectrum, mental health, drug addiction, there are a lot of layers to this. But I also think we need to be looking at homelessness, not just from individuals who are living on the street, but we need to understand that homeless people can look like everybody in this room. Whether you get into homelessness because of unemployment, or whether you get into homelessness because of domestic violence. And so, we have to ensure that all of those services are available for individuals to be preventative and not after the fact. Thank you.
Counselor...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Challenger, belanger.
Appreciate that.
Don't let it go to you ahead.
I won't. I promise. Homelessness, it is such a big issue. I've thought about it. You know, one of the things I always wonder, what is the tolerance for it in the city? What do the residents feel? You know, when the governor came last week, 6:00 AM, sheriff's office was out on the South Common, moving the homeless people along. Now, eventually, they came back. So what is the tolerance level? Do we move them when it's convenient? Or do we find out from the ACLU that we can be compassionate, but yet firm? We all know that mental health issues are a big part of the homeless population. I live right next to Solomon Mental Health. That place used to be filled to the brim. My mom worked there, and we, you know, we got these people services, but you know what? There are a lot of bad things that happen at some of these institutions, and that's why they're closed. We need federal money to open these mental health facilities, get these folks into treatment programs. It is just crazy. CTI has done a wonderful job, but is that the responsibility of putting 70 families in the Best Western? Is that solving the problem? So we need to find out what the tolerance level is in the city of Lowell. Look, I think there are, there has to be a developer out there that can maybe find some property, maybe the old Marley case, for anybody that knows where it is, that we can build additional affordable housing close to services. Look, when I worked at Make...
Again, I keep interrupting you, sorry about that.
No, the second time. I think it's pretty good.
We'll move on, yes, to Councilor Drinkwater.
Thank you. And I think it's important to note here that there's the homelessness we see, and there's the homelessness that we don't see. As you mentioned, Chris, camps along the connector, those are the individuals that we maybe most associate with being without homes and that we see all the time. There's also the homelessness that we don't see, that Bobby mentioned, people and families that are couch surfing, that might be sleeping in cars, or going from, you know, motel to staying with family. And there are more than 1,000 students in our Lowell public school system who are considered to be homeless, and that oftentimes escapes people's minds when we're thinking about this issue of homelessness. So, for those families who may be homeless because they couldn't keep up with the rent because they're evicted, we need to make sure that we are continuing to produce housing that is affordable in the city to prevent that from happening again. For families who may be facing eviction now, who may be behind on the rent because of the pandemic, there are unspent state and federal funds out there to prevent evictions, and I think we need to make sure that we get that information out to residents and make sure that we prevent evictions from happening until they've gone through that process of trying to capture those state and federal funds that can catch them up and catch their landlords up as well. And, you know, in terms of the homelessness that we do see, that so much is attributable to drug addiction and mental health issues that are untreated, we can't do this without state and federal help, but so many people right now need long-term care and treatment in a hospital setting that they just are not able to get. Oftentimes, civil commitment laws are used, we have people out there from the city, from nonprofits, from police departments, who are trying to get people the help and resources they need. Oftentimes, that involves hospital treatment, and the hospitals have them back out on the streets in 24 to 48 hours. These individuals need the funding for long-term stays in hospital or treatment settings to put them on a path to leading, to recovery and leading a full life. And that's something the city can't do alone, but we need to make sure we're connecting those individuals with the resources that do exist.
Thank you.
Counselor Mercy?
Thank you very much. This is the number one issue. We had a governor come in, we had the Parks Department, DPW, we cleaned the whole, they cleaned the whole area, the governor came in, it looked beautiful. We swept that issue right under the rug. That is a disgrace. We do have people in the city called the working poor. These are the people that need the housing, these are the people we should focus on getting them homes. They can maintain themselves if they have a better paying job or schooling to get a trade or whatever. But I'm going to tell you that this is a big, big issue. We have people that are mentally ill. You can't take a mentally ill person and say, oh, they need housing, they're not going to be able to sustain themselves in a home. They need help, they need someone to monitor their medication so that they can be normal again. These are good people, but they need their medication, they're not on it. I could go on forever on this, but I will go on tomorrow night when I make my motion about creating a summit of people to see where we can go with this, because right now, the city of Lowell is a beacon saying, come to the city of Lowell for all these services. I'm telling you the truth, there'll be people that won't want to hear it, but I'm telling it like it is, and I'm going to say it tomorrow night at the council meeting, because that's what it's all about. Can I solve this problem? No. Can the city of Lowell solve it? I don't think so, but if we work together... The governor came down, he said, this is a, this is a city of Lowell problem. No, it isn't, it's a state problem, it's a, you don't see this in Andover, you don't see this in Newbury Point, you see it in Lowell. Is Lowell a destination city to come in and look at this? They're coming in like a car crash, oh, I want to see that accident. This is what they're looking at, the homeless saying, oh, thank God that I don't have to live on the street. That's a disgrace, that's a shame. These are somebody's children, they need help, they need a building facility like they did in the Maya Long with Mayor Janney, she put them in a hotel, that's a stink. We need to monitor them, we need to counsel them, we need to detox them, we need to get them back into...
Thank you, Councilor Mercer.
Productive people. Thank you.
Counselor Newen?
Thank you. Yes, I see everyone here, everyone at home see the increase in homelessness. We are concerned with the issues, it's very, very concerning. I did file a motion for tomorrow night to get an update on where we at, because about a year ago, city manager hosted a task force around homelessness. It was a discussion around Housing First Initiative, because, you know, look, the homeless people that we see in the encampment and whatnot, in the corner... in the corners of connectors and, um, they're not just want, they're, they're not just need home. They need a places where they can go to and get take care of, uh, mental health, uh, substance abuse, all those things. And after that employment, uh, if you have kind of a wraparound service, uh, working with partner like CTI, Light Connection, and so many other state and local, it's possible that we can address that. But we need to continue this working group that the manager set up years, a year or so ago, making sure that we have all the resources, put all the resources together to address it. Even with that, it's still difficult, it's still long-term to go. The one that we cannot see, that sleep on the couch of friend or family, that one too, we need to work with the school, uh, to make sure that the school have resources out there to help them, assist them, uh, you know, because this is our children, this is the future of Lowell. With regard to the increase of house, uh, homelessness, I think a lot of, some of those increases stem from, we own, we own the neighboring city and town. We own Drakehead, we own Barica, we own Chumswood, those are homeless that come to Lowell because we have service. We have the, the, the detox center, we have the methadone clinic and they stay, they don't leave, they don't go back. Just like Boston own homelessness is from, uh, neighboring city, Revia's, you know, uh, and other. So, so, so we need to do a better job at that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So we're gonna do some, oh, yes, um-
Can I just respond?
Sure, yes, you have.
I understand that the city has a task force, um, that has met, um, and throughout the whole pandemic, I think homelessness has increased. We have one homeless coordinator, one. I think we've identified, I think she had two hundred cases. Who can handle two hundred cases? How effective is that going to be? We need to expand upon it. I love your idea of a summit, but I would take it a step further. I met a young woman who was homeless and she got clean four years ago and it's very difficult for her, but she did it. Why can't we have somebody like her be sort of like a success coach and have them come to the meeting? And maybe they can give us ideas to help some of these people. But one coordinator, it's just not going to make it the problem going away. It's just not.
Thank you. So, um, that ends our question, but we have a bonus question. But before I go to the bonus question, I'm going to give Ms. Ballinger a chance to restate her opening statement as I was told the music really went over her statement, so it's not fair that everybody knows.
So I have fans out there.
Yes, you do have fans. Your fans text you.
So it was, somebody texted me, I won't say who.
Yes.
But I do have fans out there, so.
I'm, I'm going to give you two minutes, but the bonus question, you have one minute because we only have, um, ten minutes left. So, yes, so you have two minutes.
As everybody knows, I'm Deb Ballinger. I was, um, born in Lowell, St. John's to be exact, um, and I grew up in, well, first I was at Julian Steele and then we moved to Westford Street and then we settled on Maud Street, little side street off of, um, Middlesex. I enjoyed my time in the, in the Highlands, um, thirty-two years I lived there. But the man I married, he was from Pawtucketville, born and raised, he's a Navy veteran and, um, we've lived in Pawtucketville for thirty-one years. Why am I running for city council? Well, I can, I am going to be a full-time city council. I'm very excited. I will start collecting my retirement money October one and, um, you know, I've won a lot of hats in my life. I have been in marketing, I spent fourteen years at Wang, then I spent eight years at a family-owned travel agency. And then I was headed, uh, I was, um, sought out to head up the, um, Convention and Visitors Bureau for the Merrimack Valley. In all of that, I have been innovative. I have created tourism programs when there weren't any tourism programs, um, in the Merrimack Valley. And I'm very proud of my record and, um, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to serve the people of Lowell. And I won't be afraid to use my voice. I feel like I have the experience to, well, I'm already leading a lot of things, but to be a leader on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. So I stand corrected. There is no bonus question. We have, um, just a certain amount of question that was curated, that picked out and then selected for a certain amount, for everyone. Um, so what we're going to do is, um, we will, um, close, um, the debate. I want to sincerely thank all of you, to the incumbent, thank you for your service, to the challenger, thank you for having the courage to put your name on the ballots. I know that this is a unique election cycle and we are very lucky to have all of you on the ballot. So to our audience, do not forget November second. Please vote, please vote, please vote. I cannot stress that enough. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you. Thank you very much.